Good evening and welcome to the meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors for August 17, 2017. We do have a show for everyone, so look at one of the screens, gentlemen, would you?
Hello, and thank you for tuning in to this North Penn News Update. Even though school hasn't started yet, North Penn has already been busy with annual events, Chromebooks, and more. Let's check out what has been going on at North Penn this summer. The North Penn Educational Foundation held the 16th Annual Golf Outing at Pinecrest Country Club this week. Between sponsors and 126 golfers, over $20,000 was raised for classroom grants throughout the North Penn School District for the upcoming school year. The foundation was also on hand to welcome our new teacher inductees and provide a sweet snack during their lunch period today. Phase two of our Chromebook initiative is well on its way. New Chromebook distribution for students in grades six through 12 took place last week. Our technology staff was on hand to help new students log in and make sure everything is set for the new school year. This year, all students in grades six to 12 have a personal Chromebook to advance digital learning and bring lessons to a whole new level. For many seniors, the college application process seems like a daunting task, but thanks to the North Penn College Application Boot Camp, many rising seniors got a head start. Guidance counselors were available to explain how Naviance, the Common App, and your college essay impact your overall application. North Penn invited all students entering kindergarten to the annual K-Day. Along with a parent or guardian, students experienced their first ride on the yellow North Penn school bus and learned about the proper safety for waiting and riding a bus. This week was a busy one for North Penn students in sports and activities, as preseason started on Monday. Many teams held tryouts and are now beginning their regular season, ready to showcase their hard work and talent. From football, soccer, tennis, field hockey, and more, we are excited to see North Penn athletics be successful this fall. The marching band also began band camp this week, and they are getting ready for upcoming competitions. NPTV graduate Zach McCool debuted his documentary program, "World War II and the Men Who Were There." The documentary featured five Lansdale veterans of World War II, capturing their stories and insight for generations of students to come. You can view the documentary on NPTV, Comcast Cable Channel 28, and Verizon Cable Channel 29 this week right after the school board meeting. Believe it or not, the first day of school is right around the corner. Seventh and 10th grade orientations will be held on August 28. The first day for first through 12th grade will be on August 29, and kindergarten will begin on the 30. We are looking forward to another great school year in the North Penn School District. Go Knights! That's it for this North Penn News Update. Make sure to check out our YouTube channel at youtube.com/NPTV. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys put it behind the screen, you gotta move it. I know, I know, it's very helpful. It's very helpful, it's very fortunate. All right, we're gonna move forward with our agenda, welcome everyone. It should be noted that the board did meet executive session today, August 17, 2017, from roughly 6:15 to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of litigation, potential litigation, and also negotiations with both our unions. So we're gonna move forward with a regular at our action meetings, which is our proclamations time. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize students who competed in the 2017 Skills USA district, state, and national competition. With us this evening to introduce those students, we do have Gina Partovich. Gina is the Assistant Director of North Monco Technical Career Center.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for extending your time and courtesy to recognize these students tonight. We're very proud to have them here. Just so everyone in the audience understands, we have a leadership organization called Skills USA. Skills is comprised of students from career and technical centers across, actually, the country. In Pennsylvania, we're divided into regions. Students compete in their occupational area. In some cases, the competition within one classroom is such that the teacher has to conduct a competition, a mini-competition, to see who'll move on. Then they compete at the district level, and then the top student, the gold medal winners, will move on to the state competition. And then, the gold medal winners from states can go on to national competitions and hopefully hit their stride. Tonight, we have a number of students. All of these students either placed first, second, and third in their occupational area, and as I introduce them to you, I'm gonna let you know where that is. Benjamin Leidy. Ben competed in technical drafting. He received a gold medal at state competition and moved on to national competition, where he finished third in the country. Kyle competed in industrial motor control. He received a gold medal at state competition and also moved on to nationals. Ed competed in welding technology. He also received a gold medal at state competition, and he moved on to nationals. Devin competed in automotive specialization. He received a silver second-place medal at state competition. Ian competed in automotive service technology. He received a silver medal at state competition. Stephen competed in CNC technician, that's computer-aided drafting and machining, and he received a silver second-place medal at states. Victoria competed in the Health Occupations Health Knowledge Bowl, and her team placed third. They won bronze medals at states.
As is our practice, you have more for us. Go ahead, there's a couple of kids that didn't show up. So, we would like to congratulate each and every one of you through the full administration and the full board, so guys, come on through. And, would you join them at the end for us? Yeah? Thank you. Yeah?
Congratulations. 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 Thank you so much.
Hold on again. Thank you. This is for the guys who weren't here, make sure that they get it. Another round of applause for these guys. Yeah, why don't you announce the repeat of the show?
So, this school board meeting will be aired on Comcast Cable 28 and Verizon FiOS 29 on the following dates: Friday, August 18, 7:30 PM; Monday, August 21, 12:30 PM and 7:30 PM; Tuesday, August 22, 12:30 PM and 7:30 PM; and Wednesday, August 23, at 12:30 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Charnock. All right, we're gonna move forward with our agenda now as the Audience of Citizens for our action meeting. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and address, and sign our Audience of Citizens logbook that's up there. Yes? Mr. Kennedy, is it up there? Yes, excellent.
Hello, my name is Heather Sand, and I live in the Orchards off of Horsham Road. My daughter is a second grader, or going to be in second grade, at Gwinnor Elementary I first wanted to actually congratulate all of you, as I am proud, and I know the other parents are proud, to see that North Penn was ranked as the 11th in ranking of Pennsylvania's best school districts. I have a list right here. We beat out Central Buck School District. We beat out Council Rock School District. Yes, absolutely! They are two of the toughest school districts to beat, Lower Moreland and Upper Dublin. So my hat goes off to all of you, especially as well the great teachers that make this possible, the staff, the principals, superintendent, and all of you here. So, definitely, we as parents are proud. It's been on Facebook, so it's been something that we've been proud of. However, to keep our district maintaining this great accomplishment, sometimes we need to make some tough decisions. And I was actually here at the end of the school year, knew all, got a chance to meet my daughter, Victoria, and she was so excited to find out her second-grade teacher, so thrilled. But unfortunately, we found out that she has, her grade, has lost a classroom and a teacher. And so I'm here for the class sizes. There is an issue, I know, at other schools as well, but since I am a parent of a student here at Gwinnor, I'm gonna talk about that. Gwinnor actually has three grades that look to be either near or at the cap of students that are needed in a class. And for second grade, my daughter, I've been told that it is 75, three classes, that's 25 per class, the cap is 26. Now, that leaves three students to reach the max for new students coming into the school. That is not only possible, but it's really probable, three students just on the second-grade level at any point in the year. So I remember the conversations that we had at the end of the school year, and it was mentioned that one of two things would happen. The first one would be an aide, and I'm not quite sure if, with North Penn, I know many other school districts, you don't have to be a certified teacher as a requirement for an aide. Or there could be another classroom, which of course, there is one, empty, waiting for, hopefully, a class to actually happen. Let's see. Our teachers have such great demands placed on them nowadays. I'm sure you guys all have noticed that. Yet, they still make learning a really positive place. We are overextending these demands on the teachers by not having air conditioning, by adding more bodies in a small, hot classroom, by possibly having an aide which may or may not be a certified teacher a year before PSSAs. That's putting it kind of bluntly, okay? So, you know, the students, there's gonna be more students, and if it's not a qualified teacher to assist and co-teach, I don't know how beneficial that's gonna be at a second-grade level, second grade. And of course, we've heard about the full inclusion, which is very beneficial with proper supports in place. I am one of other parents here tonight to ask for change now, to support our great teachers, and most importantly, our children. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Blanchard. I'm a parent of North Wales. I live at 301 Shearer Street, North Wales, PA. I'm also here on classroom size. We at North Wales, for the sixth grade, and actually, the policy of 6151, the numbers, I know we've discussed this back in 2014, and many of you have been at that meeting before, that we all talked about safety, the numbers need to change, statistics or studies are saying that classroom size needs to be smaller. And I know we did, one of our parents did receive an email today from a board member that basically said that North Wales is now at 28, 29 in this sixth-grade class. We did move from the mods since Monday, since we met on Monday, but this still isn't enough. And it was stated by this board member that we would look at the individual, meaning that North Wales was one of those schools that we would be looking at. Well, I'm here to speak for one of those individuals, and that's my daughter. My daughter Samantha is, has a 504 plan. Her 504 plan, she had it on IEP before it got changed over to a 504 plan. However, her 504 plan, even with three teachers, has not been followed. She is required for additional support, and this is to be at recess time, and she has not received even with three teachers. Now, with two teachers, they both have to go outside to watch these children on the playground. She will not receive that help again. I have spent thousands upon thousands of dollars getting my daughter back up to grade level for this year, to prepare her for sixth grade and for middle school. And I feel with a classroom of 29, because that's the classroom she's in with the 29 students, she will not succeed in middle school. So if we are looking at this as an individual basis, and I know many of my parents are here are also gonna speak for their child, and we actually have some of the students here to speak, I really consider the, ask the board to consider adding another class, not just for North Wales, but any of those that are hitting the maximum. Our students deserve better. We, the taxpayers, have come out not only in droves now, but in 2014. This is what we want. We're not asking for much. We're asking to give our children a chance with smaller classroom sizes, because studies have proven that they do work. They're better, and the benefits outweigh anything that we can do in these big, large classrooms. And especially given the fact that in sixth grade, we are now with Chromebooks, 29 students learning a Chromebook to one teacher. I think that's a little unfair. Thank you.
My name's Elena Pavalianeti, and I live on Windsor Circle in the Orchards. I was gonna kind of sit back and lay low tonight, but of course, as many of you know, I can't do that. Two things, one, my major soapbox, air conditioning. When are the bids going out for this? And are we gonna do more than minimal requirements this year? Are we gonna post it more than what minimally states? We did minimal requirements last time, yes, that was it.
What's the timeframe, Mr. Charnocky, for the bids?
The timeframe is for the fall. I think we've answered that before. We don't have a specified advertisement date scheduled yet, but our timeline remains to be the fall of this year.
We did the same thing last year, and we got nothing. So why are we not moving forward, trying to be a little more proactive?
Steve, is that coming to finance, or is it coming to support services?
Well, it was already authorized by the board, so no further committee discussion is needed. So our plan is to let the bids out in the fall, in October, November, early December time period. The bids were let out last year in February or March, so it's a completely different landscape when you let the bids out four months earlier. If the bids don't come back in a favorable manner, we will have time to rebid it this year. We didn't have time last year because they were let out so late. The project wasn't even discussed until October of last year. And the project was put on the fast track, and it was expedited, and we got the bids out as fast as possible. Unfortunately, the bids did not come back favorable. They were well over estimates, and in fact, we did not receive one prime contract, which meant we couldn't move forward with the project. This year, we do have the luxury of a potential rebid if necessary.
Did you mention Oak Park, too, would you please? Tell that one out again?
I'm sorry?
Was it Oak Park where we did that separately?
Correct.
Yes.
Would you mention that again, please?
Right, Oak Park project was pulled out separately. That was something that we moved forward with this year. That project is underway now.
That's right.
And substantial completion, Mr. Kennedy, is sometime in September.
That's correct.
Yeah, and when it went out to bid the first time, we didn't get anybody along with the other, but then we did bid it separately. It came back, went under budget, we got a lot of bidders, and it went well. So I want to assure the public, I'm not trying to be rude.
Right, no, I'm just being proactive.
I'm just trying to say that it's not fair to say that we did minimal. We pushed hard for this, do it as fast as we possibly could, but sometimes these things happen, and I said that at the particular time. And we were, you know, we are going out online again, and we are pretty positive that we'll come back a positive result. We want to get this done.
Oh, I know you do. I'm not saying you don't.
And we can't do it right now, because we have nowhere to put the air conditioners. And we have nowhere to store, I mean, there's a lot to it that goes on, ma'am, and we're trying to work as hard as we can to get this job done. And I want to make sure that's understood.
That's fine, I'm just, I, again, can't sit back and not ask questions. I need to be able to ask questions and say, I opened my mouth and asked.
No, no, but some people have come forward and acted like we were, you know, we weren't pushing this, or for some reason, the architect messed up, and it's not true. I just want to make sure that it's perfectly clear that this is normal procedure. We worked as hard as we can, we want to get this done, we have the money, we're not borrowing for it, and we want to get this done as much as you do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Secondly, again, like with many of the other parents here, is class size. North Penn does have guidelines for class size, just like many other school districts. These class-sized guidelines have not been revised since March of 2011. A lot has changed since 2011. Main thing, being North Penn's now full inclusion, with increased class sizes and more kids with special needs, and I do have one of those kids with special needs who has an IEP, and one teacher in a classroom, tell me how that's productive and/or safe. The U.S. Department of Education identifies class size reduction is one of the most effective remediations proven effective through research to have positive and long-lasting effects on classroom behavior, better grades, higher graduation rates, and higher test scores. They further found that smaller class sizes, student achievement has more significant impact on the demographic achievement gaps. According to Diane Ravitch, who is an education expert and author, reduced class sizes initially do have a higher cost, which is being overlooked by the cost of teacher turnover. Retaining teachers who are set up for success costs less in the long run, because there's no added expenses of incurring for recruiting or initial training. Long-term teachers positively impact a strong school and community culture on the collaboration and ethic of care. I do realize that some schools have smaller class sizes, because if we changed it, they would look larger. I do get that. But there are a bunch of classes, I think there's like around 10, 12, somewhere around there, that are bubble classes. Right now, we have two of them at Gwinnor. First of all, thank you for making our sixth-grade class a fifth/sixth grade. With 117 kids, we needed that sixth grade, that fifth class, thank you very much. The next concern for us is fourth grade with 85 kids in three sections, 28, 28, and 29. When you compare them to Central Bucks, their class sizes for 15 elementary schools are 19.5 to 23.5 kids. Council Rock, for their 10 elementary schools, is 19.4 to 25.6. According to the U.S. Department of Education, national averages for private schools should be eight to one, charter schools anywhere from 10 to 15 to one, and suburban public schools 18 to one. Can you, schools in general, where do we come up with the facts to be able to do these guidelines? How are those numbers come up with?
It is a great question. I don't know, we're in a public meeting where we're gonna do public business. If you want to get that answered, why don't you talk to the superintendent and get it?
Okay. I know the district, again, has been against building another high school or more elementary schools. We'd rather just keep jamming kids into these overcrowded classrooms. Overcrowded classrooms lead to kids who can't focus, which in turn leads to teachers who are burnt out and either leave the district or just can't do the job that they're actually intended to do. Lowering our classroom size guidelines can only help our kids and teachers. You, as a board, need to please look at this guideline, revise it, and accommodate our kids and our teachers to make the least restrictive learning environment possible. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Hanley, and this is my daughter Bridgette Hanley. And Bridgette is going to be a sixth grader at North Wales Elementary, and I'm gonna let her speak about what she feels of why we're all here.
So, last year, we had, okay, so last year, at the end of, you guys are all saying, well, kids are leaving, so we should have fewer class sizes. And I just found out today that one of the sixth-grade classrooms, one of the two sixth-grade classrooms for this year at North Wales is gonna have 29, and the other one 28. Now, last year, I had a teacher, and we had about 23 kids in the classroom, and I got a really good PSSA score. So I think if we lowered the amount of kids in the classroom, it would help kids get better grades and help them learn better, and then they would turn out to be a smarter kid.
I was here also on Monday night, and I talked a little bit about, my daughter also has a 504 plan. And there are multiple children that have 504s and IEPs, and of course, there's average kids. And I just don't feel that having these large classes, and again, I'm very grateful also that we got moved out of the mods and we have an actual classroom, but again, it's not enough. The teachers have a very difficult job, and I think we need to support them and give them a class size that they can handle to get all of our kids to where they need to be. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Christine Haley Brennan. We are a NAP family. I live on 802 Yorktown Street in Lansdale. I was here in April or May and was discussing class size. And in two weeks, my kids will start school, as many here are going to, and my son doesn't know who his teacher is. Did you know that? At NAP Elementary, he will be entering fourth grade, am I right? Because sometimes it's weird when your baby is going into fourth grade. He doesn't have a teacher, and I didn't know, because when I first logged on Tuesday or Wednesday, oh my goodness, 2 PM, or more like 7, because of the, and we understand, he had a teacher's name. Yay, this is who you're having, and I thought, wow, they really planned, they did it, they did it, they did it, because this is a fourth-grade class that in April at NAP, everyone knew there would be four teachers, where last year there were three because of numbers. Everyone knew it, this was not a district question. Yes, they planned, they thought about my kids, it's gonna be a great year, and the name I saw was out of this world, a great teacher, couldn't be happier. This morning, I get a text from a parent and says, my son, my son isn't with you, because we said yay, they're together, and now there's no name. What? Go back on Home and Access Center. I also have another parent who's here with me, same thing happened to her, there's no name. So this parent happened to find out, because I didn't, I was working, and she was probably working, but happened to put in some health insurance information today and saw that the name of the teacher is missing. Called the school, NAP Elementary, found out that he is no longer going to be in the fourth grade, and they are hiring, or something. We don't know, we never know. Why don't I know? Why don't you know? Why don't you plan? I've reached out to you, Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Santora, why I get pushed off. We will, we will look at the numbers, we will watch the numbers, we will watch the numbers. It is a week and a half, what is happening? Why is it so drastic at NAP Elementary that we don't- Elementary that we don't have a teacher in the fourth grade? My daughter is in sixth grade. She had a name on Wednesday. That name has changed today. What is happening? Why is this so hard? Is this incompetence? Is this negligence? Why don't we prepare for our numbers? This is a numbers game? Did somebody quit? I don't know. Every year, it's the same thing. My child doesn't know who his teacher is. I don't really mind. We're going to have grit in this family. Whoever you get, you're going to like. But who am I getting? Who am I getting? I'm looking through here. It says on one of these pages that one of the teachers I thought we were getting was going to be in fifth grade, not fourth grade. So whatever you see in this packet, what teacher is coming? Who's planning for my child's education this year? Or do I have to coast again and have someone who's a long-term sub, which they're wonderful and great, but not invested, because North Penn won't hire them anyway? Next year, we won't need you, because the numbers might go down. It's constant. It is time for change, and if you're not with us, we're going to find people who are ready to change this, this, this. Only 26, well, we can have 26, or we can have 27. We're going to find it, because now I know people from Norwenn, and I know people from North Wales, and I know people from Bridle Path, and I know people, because it's not just going to be NAP that sits back and says, don't worry about our air conditioning, we don't need it, but 10 other schools has it. We don't need teachers. Don't worry about us. No, it's not going to happen anymore. This is not okay. We are taxpayers. We try to communicate with our people in the schools the way we're supposed to, and we still get slapped in the face, and my hands are tied, because I don't have a choice. I don't know how many numbers are in any of my classes, because I know we don't post that anymore. That is not HIPAA. It's not, it's not, it's not a security reason to not, I don't care who it is. I'm not the parent who says, oh, put her in this, and put him in this class. I want to know numbers. Why can't I know numbers? I have to call my principal to know numbers. Nobody tells, I'm going to ask you how you found your numbers. Why? I'm a, I'm a taxpayer. I'm a parent. I'm a concerned parent. I come into my school. I'm in my school. I want my teachers to succeed. They're not succeeding. Who's this person going to jump in in a week and a half? I don't know. I hope our kids make it. What about the teacher that got moved? What about planning? What about investing in our kids? This isn't that hard. So I find two reasons that I don't have a teacher for my child. Negligence or incompetence? What is it?
Do we have an answer to that, or can we look into that?
Yeah, I'll be glad to speak later to this person, but it clearly is not negligence or incompetence. Human resources is a complicated matter. Assigning people, people get assigned to other positions. Some people leave for other reasons. Some people get sick. So I don't appreciate being accused of negligence or incompetence.
Thank you very much for opportunity to speak. My name is Jonathan Casa. My daughter goes to Gwinor. My son goes to Penbrook. And I do want to thank the superintendent, assistant superintendent, staff, Dr. Santoro, really the administration, who it seems year after year has been able to thread the needle, dodge the bullet, every other cliche, could buy the skin of our teeth for our children's benefit. I've been fortunate as a parent at Gwinor and NAP. I was here in 2014. I was here in May, and yet here again. Been fortunate that the board has stepped up and done the right thing just at the right time. I think what many parents here are looking for, and even myself, and it's what we try to teach in character and values with our children, is when do you stand up and do more when it's not expected? So that's a question that I'd like to have answered, maybe, if not today, sometime in the future. I would really like, out of this board, for the vision and the leadership to be there, the planning, the curiosity. If it was 2014, and I know I had the same conversation then, if it was just May, I understand that numbers come and go, and it's a very fluid situation. And really, there's a lot of credit for how finances have been dealt with year to year. But when we look year after year after year and suffer from the same problems, such as classroom overcrowding, a lack of strategic planning for resources, whether it be human resources, air conditioning, capital planning, taxes, we're not seeing any of this. Full-day kindergarten, might finally be getting past some of the stone walls that have been put in front of it. But that lack of curiosity, you know, here we are. It's been three years. There's not been a committee from this board. There's not been any engagement. You know, my son has to do summer enrichment and reading, right? And they have a writing assignment. I'm sure those of you with older and younger children are used to this. He'd be in a lot of trouble if he told me with less than 24 hours, well, I'll show you my work. Just give me some time. And then finally, I get to see it a day before he turns it in. This is too late. We know that it's difficult, but where I come from in my career, I deal with some very difficult issues. I have almost 5,000 people in my vertical alone, and the training that we need to do, and the recruitment. There's a lot of effort that goes into that. But you know what has to happen? Engagement, curiosity, proactive planning. None of that engagement happens on a year-round basis. To be quite honest, I think there's some very good things and strengths that this board has done in this planning. No one will ever know it, because you try to jam everything into a five-pound sack at the last second. There's 10 pounds to go in. You do not communicate with your community. The transparency isn't there. There is no reason for the data to be out there. I've, I've been involved with major federal legislation, the CLEAR Act. It's crime reporting, policy, statistics, practices on college campuses nationwide. It's consumer protection. It's the basis of democracy, which is to put this data out there. There might be some confusion. There might be some misinterpretation, but I guarantee there won't be the outrage and the confusion and the risk to our children's education. I'll finish in just a couple more minutes, and thank you for the time. As a parent, you know, my daughter at Gwinor, she's going in that sixth grade class. Thank you. You know, we're just under 28.4, right, children, whatever that is. Last year, though, fifth grade, we were up to 30 and 31 kids in the classroom. Once again, where's the curiosity? Where's the planning? Where's the flexibility? You know what? It might be tough. Communicate with your community and your parents. Don't be afraid of them. I'm afraid that too often the priorities aren't straight here, and the vision is lacking from the board. This isn't the administration's problem. You have a dogma of spending the least amount of money. And that's good for the budget year to year, but in the long run, you're going to spend much more, because what we've seen in practice, especially studying this for the last year, over and over again, you're not looking at the value and the return on investment from taxpayers' money that your forward-thinking and proactive strategic planning can have on this process. Thank you for your time.
Evening, folks. I'm Christian Fusco from Telmensen. I hope everybody's having a wonderful summer. I'm enjoying mine. I have a couple questions. I know this is a comment format, and typically you don't answer questions. You have answered a few tonight, so I guess I'll give it a shot. First question, and I expect probably some of you will answer in the affirmative here. How many of you have ever actually worked in a classroom with 29 children? I figured you probably would, Mr. Shropinski, right? So I have also, I am a teacher. I used to work and spent seven years of my career in Philadelphia. It seems odd, there's not too many times I can compare my experiences in Philadelphia to my experience as a parent in North Penn. But oddly, apparently, this is one of those instances. I'm here to support these parents. I'm an Inglewood parent, and this isn't a concern at our school at this point in time. It certainly, at any given year, could be. But I think that, on the one hand, credit should be given, because you have managed to keep all the classes below the policy guidelines, but the response from the community might suggest that perhaps the policy guidelines themselves are part of the problem. That 29 children in a classroom is sort of going against what all the better data suggests is what's best in practice for our children. As a teacher, you know, we are told that we need to differentiate, we need to individualize, you know, we are working in small groups in order to target those needs that children have. But, I mean, even if you have an eight, eight children in a small group, if you have 29 children in your room, that leaves 21 other children that are, are fourth graders who are self-guiding themselves. And speaking from experience, that's not always the most fun situation to be in. Things happen. Chaos can erupt. More often than not, situations can become unmanageable. It's not an ideal learning environment. So this, this brings me to my second question, and this is honest for clarity. I have been to a number of meetings in the last many months, and it's, it occurs to me that one of the decisions that the board made in enacting this year's budget was to eliminate some teaching positions, was to allow through attrition, I believe, and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was 14 teaching positions. It wasn't that many? How many was it? Was it, do we know?
Five elementary, three secondary.
Okay, so eight overall teaching positions. Through attrition, teachers retired, and it was decided that these positions were no longer needed. Now, I understand that budgeting is a difficult process, and I understand that there are many constraints that, that you are under when making these decisions. I understand that you can anticipate what the enrollments are going to be. But I find it hard to believe that you couldn't anticipate that there would be some classrooms in the number of elementary schools that we have that would be experiencing these kind of enrollment caps at this point in time. So I question the wisdom, frankly, in eliminating those teaching positions when they could have been reallocated. And that's not even necessarily adding to the budget. It's simply going somewhere else to look for cost savings. As a parent, as a teacher, it is concerning to me that when you are looking for cost savings, teaching positions is an area where you're looking. That, again, speaks to prioritization, which is a concern on my part for this board. Teaching positions should be the last resort when you're looking for savings in the budget, the absolute last resort. We found money for Chromebooks, and my daughter's in sixth grade, and she's getting a Chromebook. And she's excited, and I'm excited, we're all excited. But a Chromebook is not a human being. It's not going to replace a teacher. It should not replace a teacher. I, I would suggest two things. First and foremost, that this board revisit, since it has been six years, apparently, the guidelines for class size, and that in the future, that budgetary decisions that are being made, and they are tough, and I, I get that, but please, teaching positions, let's, let's hold that till the last absolute resort. Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Blanchard again, from North Wales.
Would you let the people have them spoke first?
Sure. No, I forgot something in my presentation. We actually started an online petition, and I forgot to give that to you. I only have one copy, because I'm a stay-at-home mom, and I don't have a copier. So...
Make sure you give it to our board secretary before the end of the meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Laco, and I am a Bridle Path parent. And I'm here to discuss class size as well. We recently had a petition that went around, and we had gained about 89 or 90 signatures from concerned parents regarding the fact that our current fourth grade class will be going from four classrooms down to three classrooms this year. So I just, for those of you who may not have seen the petition, I'm just going to read some portions of it for everyone to hear. So we write you as parents and guardians of Bridle Path fourth grade students to express our great concern over changing four third-grade classrooms into three fourth-grade classrooms in the 2017 and 2018 school year. While we are trying to understand your budget constraints, knowing it's challenging for you to reconcile budget in a climate that is not willing to increase our taxes, we ask that you put our children first. We are petitioning you to change your decision and make four fourth grade classrooms for this upcoming school year. We're deeply concerned due to the fact that the same group of students began second grade at Bridle Path during the 2015 and 2016 school year with three classes. And subsequently, they were disrupted in September because of the necessity of adding an extra classroom to meet the exceptionally diverse range of students. So below, I have listed a few points that we wanted you to consider. So the district had decided to go back to three classrooms, which we feel had proved to be ineffective for this group, and it was, again, disruptive to the students who were affected. And again, as has been stated before, North Penn is an inclusion district, which is great. And due to this new model, many students who have IEPs and special needs are now included with already increasing class sizes. And the numbers, we understand that the number of students per classroom generally goes up from third to fourth grade based on the ranges due to the policy. However, this is not an average group of children. As stated above, there's a wide range of learning abilities in the classroom. Some students have academic, behavioral, social, emotional, and medical needs that require additional attention in the classroom. And a larger-sized class would limit the teacher's ability to provide adequate support to each and every student. According to the North Penn School District, IEPs need to be followed and in compliance, and a larger class size will hinder the teacher's ability to perform this task. And going from four classes to three would actually be a 33% increase in class size for this group, which is significantly higher considering the issues and challenges. So as parents, we want to make sure that the teachers have the necessary tools to perform their job without complication and be able to focus on what's most important, which is educating our children. And three classes would be a disadvantage to teachers, parents, and above all, the students. So please consider adding a fourth, fourth grade class for the upcoming school year, based on the points above. Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Natalie Wagenhofer. I live at 145 Jonathan Drive. My son Dylan goes to Gwinor Elementary and is going into the fourth grade. I found out that this year, they were downsizing the fourth from four classes to three. My son will be in a classroom of 29 students this year. Did anyone think to maybe leave fourth grade alone, considering this will be the children's first year that they're going to be changing classes amongst all the classes? There's going to be confusion, questions, and an overwhelming change for them as they learn a new routine this year. There is one teacher to help those 29 students adjust to that new routine of changing classes that normally starts in middle school. These kids are nine. Again, going to be a lot of questions and confusion among the students, and 29 of them is just too much. I know there are guidelines, but guidelines are meant to be changed, and ours haven't been changed since 2011. I am nervous, upset, and concerned about the new school year for my son this year. Please reconsider the guidelines and consider the kids, their emotions, feelings, and their education. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Hall. I live at 109 Rosewood Drive, and I have four children who go to Bridle Path. I am one of the 89 who signed the petition of Ms. Laco, who was just up here. I'm not only a parent of four children, I'm also a special education teacher in a different district. So I'm coming to you as a parent, but also with the knowledge of what it looks like in a classroom. I have taught in co-teaching, and I have also taught in pull-out, so I know what that looks like also. I would like to really encourage you... I would like to really encourage you to take a look at more than just numbers when you're looking in those classrooms. Those are kids. I know what it is like to teach children, and when you're teaching a child, the most important thing that you can do for that child is make that connection. If you don't have that connection with your students, you miss out on so much, they miss out on so much. And if you have 29 students in your class, some with a lot of unique needs, there is no way that you are going to be able to make the connections that you need to. I am also coming to you as a parent of a child in fourth grade who has selective mutism. She was diagnosed in second grade. Last year was a huge year for her. She was in a class of 21 students, and she made a lot of progress. She made a lot of progress because her teacher was phenomenal. The principal at Bridle Path is phenomenal. He did puzzles with her every morning after announcements, just so he could make a connection with her. I can't say enough about how important that connection with a child is. My daughter, who's going to be going into fourth grade and going into a classroom with 28 other students, is going to take huge steps back. She finally started to talk to her teacher, finally, by the end of last year. That is going to go to the wayside if she cannot make a connection with her teacher. We are talking about fourth grade, where you start to switch, where she is going to be having more than one teacher. To add those extra things to that list, having all those other students in the classroom, it's just, it's a lot. And it's not only a lot for my child, who has lots of anxiety and who shuts down and has, it's for all children. They're nine and 10 years old. They're nine and 10. We're asking so much of them, and then you're asking so much of the teacher, and it really doesn't seem to work out. It doesn't sound like it's going to work out very well. So please, when you are thinking about these numbers, when you're thinking about all of this, they're not numbers. They're children. They are children, there are children that really need as much support as they can get, that social, emotional learning. This is the time for those things, too. This is when they are starting to make really good friends, and they're starting to think about outside of their family, and they need that teacher to be that person, too. And it's impossible if that teacher has 29 students with lots of needs in their classroom. So please reconsider.
Hello, my name is Tara Russell. I have three children at North Wales, one going into sixth grade, another going into third, and then I will have a kindergartner. My family and I moved, it'll be two years this month, from Marshfield, Massachusetts, town south of Boston, and of course, I'm here in regards to the classroom sizes, not only for my sixth grader, but apparently for my third grader as well. And just wanted to give you the perspective of someone that had spent several years at another school district out of state. So one of the huge differences I see, quite frankly, is the lack of communication. I use the word "apparently" with my third grader because I still haven't heard, nor has any of these third-grade parents heard, from our principal on whether or not it is true that we've gone from three to two classes at North Wales for the third graders. So that lack of communication, this last-minute communication we received on the sixth graders, I had never experienced that before. And the other thing I hadn't seen or experienced before back in Massachusetts was also these last-minute transitions of teachers from sixth to second to third grade. I was used to working and having teachers that my oldest son's kindergarten teacher had been teaching kindergarten for 30 years at Ames Way. So again, you know, asking for you to reconsider on these classroom sizes, but more importantly, we just need that communication and transparency. That's, I think, a lot of the frustration you're hearing today from myself and these parents. So again, just wanted to make a couple of those points. Thank you.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about something a little bit different.
Ma'am, would you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry, I wrote it down, and then I forgot. Rebecca Farmire, 301 Haynes. I'm also in North Wales. I have a second grader and a sixth grader. Just wanted to say that we know there are budget challenges, we know this is hard, we know you're between a rock and a hard place, you have pensions and things you can't change, but don't say no to the parents and kids without trying, and we don't see you trying. You're not communicating with us and telling us what we can do to help you. When Dr. Dietrich sent out the email asking people to call their representative, asking for the assessment bill to be changed, we did, and it made a difference. We're asking, we're asking for you to do that again. Take a chance on us. Let us help you. Help our kids. Let us talk for you. Let us share what you need for the district to succeed. Don't say no for class sizes. Don't say no for air conditioning. Don't say no for new buildings. Don't say no for full-day kindergarten for every kid. It's not just for kids that are behind, it's for everyone. Because my kid, who might not be behind, maybe he's advanced, he's being held back by waiting for everyone to catch up with him, because you don't have full day for everyone. So please, improve the communication. Tell us what you need, tell us what you need us to do. Let us get the word out. Look how many people came today, and how much notice did they have? A day or two. We got a petition signed by at least 103 names for North Wales only, and we put it up last night, 24 hours. So look what can happen if you ask. That's all. Thank you.
My name is Beth Montagna. I live on Barberry Road in North Wales, and I wanted to speak to you about class sizes and my personal situation. My son is going into sixth grade at North Wales Elementary. He has an IEP, and he's considered twice exceptional. He is both gifted, and he has autism. This includes sensory issues, including to noises, and also attention issues. We have liked North Wales because of the smaller class size and the teacher and administrative support he has received over the years. The school district's decision to only have two sixth-grade classes at North Wales will create a crowded, noisy, and distracting environment that will make it very difficult for my son to achieve his potential. At the end of every year, we evaluate his educational options based in large part on feedback and information we get from the school and the district. We ended last year being told that there were going to be three sixth-grade classes this year. It is disappointing and frustrating to be told three weeks before school starts that the district has gone back on this promise and instead has decided to have two classes. My son is difficulty recognizing social cues and therefore has difficulty making friends. Despite these obstacles, he has made a core group of wonderful friends at North Wales. Transitioning him away from them and to another school is something that we are considering, but it would normally require months of preparation, including visits to the new school and teachers and other efforts to integrate him into the school. Had we known back in June that the school board would be decreasing the number of classes, we would have been better prepared, better able to prepare him for any transition. Now, we're finding ourselves in the untenable position of having to choose between leaving our son in an academic environment, which will exasperate most of the things which his IEP in the school district is supposed to prevent, and will likely hinder his academic progress, or transitioning him to a new school, which will be emotionally and intellectually detrimental and will likely set him back several months, if not for a full academic year. The school board is entrusted by the people of our community to ensure that our children are properly educated. If the school board continues with the current plan to only include two sixth-grade classes at North Wales Elementary, I feel it will have violated that trust for my son and for many other students in the district. Thank you.
My name is Denise Webb. I live at 1004 Lansdale Avenue in Lansdale, and I am a parent of a fifth grader and a second grader at Bridle Path Elementary. And while I don't have an incoming fourth grader, or for many of the schools, their students are facing the challenge of overpacked classrooms, I'm here to go on record and just lend my support to the fact that I think it is time to review some of the guidelines and Regulation 6151, given the time since that time. Common Core, I don't think, was enacted back in 2011, and that completely changed the landscape of the classroom and for many of the teachers. Obviously, there's a lot of passion and emotion in the room, and I know everyone works tirelessly in these positions, but Dr. Dietrich, I'm sorry, your response to the one parent that stood up, that it's difficult to hear the terms negligence and incompetence. And I appreciate your responding with the statement, though, clearly, it's not negligence and incompetence. The fact is, it's not clear to us, and perhaps it is time to better communicate with the community members and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Karshner, and I live at 753 Newport Lane in Lansdale. I just, I don't have any of these problems you guys have, but I, so I just wanted to say a little something positive. I've been a North Penn resident for 22 years. I have four children. One is now in college. I have three who are still in the North Penn school system. Fortunately, this year, I don't have a class size issue. I have been through that in the past, and I understand that. I do have personal experience with gifted IEPs, as well as 504 plans, as well as I had kids who had no accommodations. And with all the negative rhetoric that I see on Facebook and everywhere, I just wanted to give you guys something positive and let you know that all of my children have had access to great resources and top-notch instructors and teachers in the school district. I talked to a lot of other parents who have children in other school districts, and I can't believe some of the stories that I hear from them. And I've come to realize over the years, we really do have a great thing here. And again, I felt the need to speak tonight because of all the negative rhetoric I've seen over the last few months. I know that all of you are up here for the right reasons. I believe that all of you are good stewards for the taxpayers, and I know that you want the best for our students. Like someone else mentioned, we were just ranked 11th in the state by Niche.com. I like the direction we're going. I think there are obviously some things that need to be addressed, but I just wanted to give you some positive feedback and let you know, I hope that we can continue to be fiscally responsible while we maintain the standards that we've all come to expect from the North Penn schools. Thank you.
I'm going to make a recommendation that we approve the minutes of the July 20 action meeting as circulated. Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions to the minutes? Mr. Security, would you come on back here for a minute? Come around, over here. Yeah, I need to talk to you. Somebody go check on John. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Let's move forward with our committee reports, and I'll start with Safe Schools, Mrs. Prokowsky.
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee did not meet during the month of July, and our next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on Monday, September 11, beginning at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. Hope you can all come.
Thank you, Mrs. Prokowsky. Any questions for Safe Schools, September 11? Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance Committee report, the regular scheduled meeting for July was canceled. Next meeting will be on Monday, August 28, at 6:30 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions of finance this side? Mr. Kerr, personnel?
I'm down to like four of these, I think. Four more, right? And it's very difficult to report on this because it's the same thing for the past 15 years, but Personnel Committee met in executive session on August 1, from 5:30 to 6:30 to discuss. And really, you should help me, folks. Matters of personnel, negotiations, and potential litigation.
Which we're not allowed to speak of.
Thank you.
End of report. Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
I do enjoy giving this.
You say it differently, though. Support Services, Mr. Schilling.
We did not have a Support Service meeting in July. Our next Support Service meeting will be held Monday, August 28, 2017, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report. Thank you.
Would you be able to have your committee give us an update on Montgomery Construction?
Yes, we will.
ECP, Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. I actually have a report. The ECP Committee met on Monday, August 14. At this meeting, the committee received updates regarding the special content areas of health, PE, art, music, family, and consumer science, FCS, and library. In health PE, 10th-grade students will be trained in hands-only CPR, resulting in approximately 1,000 students per year being trained in this American Heart Association-approved CPR method. For FCS, a curriculum review has been completed, and equipment in the middle schools has been updated. In art, there has been an expanded use of iPad Pros, which has significantly improved the animation program at the high school. As a result of this technology being available to our students, the first North Penn student was selected into Disney's Animation Festival this year. In music, the inventory of digital pianos was updated with the addition of six new digital pianos at the elementary level. Also, the music labs at Penfield and Pembroke are being updated. In library, the use of Overdrive is continuing. This summer, there have been more than 200 checkouts, which is an increase of 73 checkouts as compared to the same time period last summer. Another addition to the libraries has been Marketer's Space Areas, which provides space for students to collaborate and tackle a STEM or STEAM project that requires the use of critical and abstract thinking, as well as problem-solving skills. These Makers Space, excuse, Areas are being piloted at the elementary schools and expanded at the secondary school. In addition, in order to meet the needs of digital researchers, the library curriculum is being revamped. The committee also received additional information concerning possible kindergarten options to address the changing demographics, student achievement, and increased rigor imposed by PA Core standards. Included in the information presented to the committee were the kindergarten programs provided by other school districts in our section of the state, plus demographics and academic data in North Penn. The possible kindergarten instructional options are smaller class size, summer camp for all buildings, extended-day kindergarten for students needing support, full-day kindergarten, and increasing partnerships with local early learning providers and families. The administrative recommendation is to expand the pilot program of providing one section of extended-day kindergarten for students in need from the present two Title I schools to the six Title I schools. The committee is recommending that the matter be discussed at a future work session. The next ECP meeting is September 11. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Charnock. September 11 is the next meeting? Who's got North Monco Technical Career Center tonight?
Well, we did actually meet in July, and we did discuss hiring of new staff, as well as pay. as well as paving of the parking lots. Our next meeting is this Monday. And I also want to give a shout out for all the, the students that won those awards. I'm very proud to be on that board, and it's certainly not my parents' technical school, and I, I wish that people would, would go take a tour because it's really, it's a wonderful educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. Who is the Superintendent Record?
That's Frank Gallagher.
Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. The IU Board did not meet in the month of July. We meet on August 23rd for the first time for the school year. I'll also note that the IU will be using the high school on August 22nd for their opening day exercises, so thank you to the school district for making that available. They're looking forward to it. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. First, I want to thank all of the parents that got up here and spoke. As a parent, a long time ago, standing at that podium, I, I know how hard it is, and I know how emotional it is. I also want to say we are not incompetent or negligent. Things happen, so, but thank you for, for speaking your mind. The Foundation's 16th Annual Golf Outing was held this past Monday. I understand it was a great success. Final numbers are not in, but we are sure to have cleared more than 22,000 to support student needs across the school district. I want to thank our long-term major sponsors, Thriven Financial, Bonet Associates, and NPEA for their continued support, plus the other sponsors and golfers. On our most recent meeting, oh, sorry, our most recent meeting was held last week. At this time, we discussed upcoming events, including the Reader's Water Icebreaker we held for new teachers today, and the trivia night being planned for Thursday, October 26th, at Round Guy's Brewery. We look forward to an exciting 2017-18 school year and supporting the teachers who are implementing innovative classrooms in our schools. At the board table tonight, you will find copies of our most recent annual report and a directory of the grants we are funding this school year. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Liberaski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. I heard the outing was a success, so. We're going to move forward with our Superintendent Report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend approval of the Tropiano and First Student Bus Company 2017-18 driver lists per item BA 3A through C.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, second by Mr. Schilling.
Comments or questions to the motion?
Yes, I have a question. We, it's the first time I recall seeing this on a list, unless it was here for years past. These drivers go through the same process as ours, through the same vetting process, the background, so same as our drivers?
Exact same process. And the reason this is appearing, I might have alluded to this at the last month's meeting, but as a result of our state audit, there was a verbal comment made as a suggestion to the district to consider placing on our agenda approval of our contracted drivers. So, we had not done that in the past. Again, it was a suggestion, and we indicated that we would follow that suggestion.
That's where I saw that, yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of North Penn School District residents' tuition-free 40 school days maximum for students 0817177 and 0817178 and 0817179, whose names are on file in the office of the Superintendent.
Motion by Mr. McGee, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Was it you?
Yeah.
Oh, I heard you. I heard you first.
Comments or questions to the motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Charnock. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to thank the leaping Irvine family for their donation. Really, we really appreciate it, and we're thankful.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as listed, A through C.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? I will abstain.
Just so that we're clear for the public, if we do decide to, if our numbers go up in certain sections, and we do decide to add sections, do we have staff that are ready to stand in those positions for the first day of school?
Yes. The answer to that is, we have absolutely six people.
We have people ready. We're ready.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention. Me.
I will note with that, approval, we do have a new Transportation Director. He's here this evening, Nick Kranek, and Nick will be available after the meeting. Can just get a little wave there, so people know who you are, and if you wouldn't mind, stop by and welcome Nick to the district.
Stand up and put you on camera, so they know to talk.
I do recommend approval of contracts per item BA 6, A through B, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Finally, I recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA 7, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Let's move forward with the Finance Report. Mr. Sharrock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned last month that our state audit was coming to a conclusion, so that has concluded. We have received our final report. We've had our exit conference. There are no findings, and previous findings have been addressed successfully. Just a reminder to our taxpayers that the end of August represents the end of the 2% discount period, so we encourage everyone to pay the real estate taxes by 8/31 to take advantage of that discount. Also, state budget, same news as last month. We do not have a revenue plan to support the state budget. At this point in time, that has had no impact on our state subsidies. However, hearing from the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, if we don't have a revenue package in the next few months, that could have an impact going forward with our state subsidies. In terms of our Treasuries Report, this is for the month of July 2017. Total cash for July receipts were $17,258,911.47. Disbursements were $12,745,747.59, leaving us with a total balance at the end of the month of $66,139,987.77, and that represents roughly a $4.5 million increase over the same period last year. End of the Treasuries Report.
Thank you. Move forward with sanction and approval of invoices.
I recommend ratification and disbursements for the month of August 2017 in the amount of $15,812,225.54 per item BA-9.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Move forward with budget transfers.
I recommend approval of the month ended June 2017 budget transfers in the amount of $37,099.32 per item BA-10.
Motion by Mr. McGee, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? That is the smallest amount of budget transfer I have ever seen in my 20 years of sitting here. Kudos. We're getting it that close and accurate. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Other business on the floor?
Vince, I'd just like to go back to the ECP. I was thinking of something. They have kids who are learning CPR. What about, I know we, we purchased some new, those AED devices, you know, for the defibrillators?
Defibrillators, right.
Who's being trained on those?
Well, staff. We had a staff training for some of them, didn't we?
I, I believe that staff members being trained on those, but I would have to check exactly who. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I'd just like to know, because when it happens, it happens fast.
Yeah, I can find that out for you. I would imagine the nurses are. I'm not sure who beyond that.
Originally, we requested them to have training, people on different floors, different pods of a building, those types of things, and then the establishment of where those places were placed by our, our safety people and the nurses to.
Only minutes to respond.
Right. Thank you. Yes. All right. Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Wait, I have, I have a couple of comments I want to make, but I want to respond to some of the comment we had at the beginning of the meeting.
Mr. D'Azio, you have a floor.
So, I just want to get a sense maybe from the other board members here. We have a group of community members and parents who are here. They've brought a concern to our attention. They want us to look at it. We're always looking for ways to better our process, so is there a willingness to somehow look at our class guidelines or the way we group students to see if there's a better way to do it? I'm not committing one way or the other to making any changes, not making any changes, but I think that when a group comes forward and they have a concern, what does it say about us as a board if we don't do anything in response? So, let's look at the issue. Maybe we can do something different. You know, there's 500 school districts in the state. We can do a study. We can see what others do. We've got expertise here in the community. Is it something that the board's willing to look at?
The first thing we should do is probably have them explain the process to those who want to know, and whether it's in writing, posted on our website, you know, the whole process, and some of us have been through this many times. The consideration of each child and their makeup. I mean, I heard somebody today, why don't you post the names? We already know that's a privacy issue. We know that. That's an issue. So, there's other things that go into the mix that people don't know. The other situation obviously is, you know, that you hear somebody say, well, you've got really poor planning. You know, you can't make a decision today for a decision that hasn't been made. If somebody decides to move into the district, we have 22 appointments next week for registrations. That, that's last minute, so if we make a change, is somebody going to complain that we didn't have good planning processes because somebody moved here and just told us next week? I mean, there are the challenges of those situations. So, I think first you should start with explaining how that, those numbers were formulated, where they came from, and I think that's the first step to that. And then if you think we have to go farther than that, that's fine. Let's have that discussion later on.
Yeah, but folks, we, we're starting school in 10 days. But don't think that this, that we do things in a vacuum and the administration does. I mean, yeah, 2011 was the last time it changed, but, but we, they look at it. They look at it regularly, regularly. So, you know, it's, it's not like we set a rule and then we just live with it until somebody complains the loudest, and then we, we look at it. I mean, we, you know, these things are considered all the time, you know?
Well, what do you mean?
I mean, communication, I, I don't know. I mean, I hear that, and I'm not so sure I, I understand that. I mean, I understand the concept, and, and communication is, is important, but my gosh, with Facebook and, and Internet and websites, I, I can't imagine that, that there's a lack of communication. You know, 15 years ago, it was a little different, but.
You can, you can only deal with the information and, like, it's, it's fluid. I mean, you can't, if certain people, like they were saying, sign up 20 kids tomorrow. I mean, things change, and that's the way it's always been. And I, I, I for one have seen the administration work as hard as they possibly can to try to do things and, and be innovative, and, and, I mean, my goodness, to try to make sure that they can, you know, make sure these numbers come together, but still, it does, it comes down to people notifying us, people telling us, you know, if they're going to leave, and, you know.
Things do settle down. I mean, I know you've heard it, but.
It always has.
You know, come September, and I understand, there are times when they're initially, the children, you know.
Don't forget, just last year, when we had seven people not show up in one grade.
No, I, I mean, it.
I mean, you know, it's going to, these are the challenges of the issue. I think Mr. D'Azio's point is 11. I'm sorry, it was 11 kids didn't show up in one grade. I apologize.
Well, let me, let me add to that, though. So, I, I think the public understands, you know, that numbers are sometimes a problem. When you're dividing kids between two or three, sometimes the numbers work out slightly in your favor, sometimes they don't. But case in point, last year, we had a situation between York Avenue and Oak Park, where we had a lot of disparity between the numbers. And internally, we put our heads together, and we came up with a solution, and we solved the problem. We made everybody happy in the process. We didn't get any blowback from the public, and we saved $100,000 in the process. So, there's other ways to engage in a discussion to see if there's certain ways we can improve certain processes. We're never going to eliminate the problem of dividing kids between four versus three versus two, and we know that sometimes.
Yeah, but that's, that's the issue.
It's not always the issue.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that most of the issue tonight was that, the very thing.
I, I think you're, you're simplifying the broad message that was given today.
Well, you tell me. I mean, what can you do? How can you tell if someone's classroom is on the border and not? You, you don't know until everybody's here, like, like the one that just said. 11 people didn't show up for one class last year. Was it last year?
Last year.
So, how do you, I mean, I'm just saying, you don't, it doesn't come down to incompetency or not trying to do the best job you possibly can or innovative techniques. It comes down to sometimes you don't know. Well, we, actually, last year, if you remember the process, after we started to experience some of the bubbles that, where they were coming to the top of our guidelines, we actually had this individual school start calling the people in those grades to see if they were going to come back, and that's when we started to discover that, oh, yeah, you know, I never did tell you, we left. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's not like they have, they sort of sit on their hands and like, it just happens, and you need people to try. And just like we did last year, we had parents come with their kids on the first day of school and say, my kid's here to go to school. Yeah. I mean, that happens too, so. So, you tell me how to fix something like that. How do you fix something like that? I think the conversation should be that, let's, let's make sure that everyone understands what they asked tonight, which is, how does this process appear? How do the class guidelines get set? And I think that's the first stage, and I think the second stage could be, do we want to, do we want to look at this in a different way? Sure. Right now, everything is fluid. You know that the final numbers aren't the final numbers because it's changing. We have 22 registrations next week. We'll probably have 10 more. Who knows? Okay? And that may affect some of the things you heard tonight from some of the classes that are affected. And by the way, I've talked to other people on their schools. I have friends on their school board. They go through the exact same thing. Everybody goes through this. Exact same thing.
Well, they, they are separate issues, though. I mean, the, the unfortunate circumstance of a new school year will never change. I mean, no matter what you do with class sizes, because you're going to have people coming in at the last minute, you know, short of setting a registration deadline, which we can't, we can't say, we can't turn, oh, sorry, you missed this year, you know, we'll come see us next year. Class sizes are different, you know, and, and that's a difficult discussion. There's, you know, educational issues that say, I mean, do you really make it, does it make a difference to go from 30, from 29 to 27? Does that make a, you know, meaningful difference? I, I don't know. I mean, I hear educators say, no. I mean, if you're going to make a meaningful difference, you got to go way down. And, you know, class size have been a struggle for us and school boards everywhere, I suspect. You know, I, I think we all would, would, you know, teachers and all, yeah, sure, smaller sizes, you know, classes certainly makes sense, but, but then we get into space, we get into dollars, you get into a lot of other issues, and, you know, we have to be mindful of all those things.
And you got to understand, some school districts are raising their class, and I don't want to do that. We don't want to do that.
I think, I think, it's always a valid subject to discuss, and, but, but.